Work session is called to order. There has been a slight change in the agenda per a request that we will consider the master milestones on the front end of the agenda so that we could give the necessary time. We do have a tendency when it's at the end to kind of be out of time and have to rush through the discussions related to milestones. So a couple of notes I would make on the front end here quickly. Number one, in our planning, we committed to addressing two of the milestones, not all of them. And the two, I know we received information on a number of them, but the two items that we are prepared to discuss today are extended learning time and partnership update. I would also caution us to really manage our time well. All of the items that are on the agenda, we could take a good deal of time discussing because of our interest and the level of importance that they all have, but we have limited time. We want to make sure that we manage our time well so that we can give appropriate time to all of the issues. And so I will kind of warn you on the front end today that I will move us along as necessary so that we can get to everything on the agenda. I would also just remind those who will present to be mindful of the designated time for presentation so that we can have, again, adequate time for Q and A and discussions. So we will begin then with item 2.10. Just the major milestones matters, not the school names, recommendation, or the agenda planning. We will come back to those two items at the end of the agenda, but for now, we will begin with the two master milestones, extended learning time, and the partnership update. We will get the information relative to what is necessary in terms of the district's work in order for us to possibly be ready if indeed we were able to get the waiver from the Department of Education. We will find out all of the things that would need to be in order in order for us to be ready for this year and what would be necessary for us to be ready for next year. All right, Dr. King?
Chairman Houston, members of the board, administration and guests. The first item linked to master milestones for discussion, as has been stated, centers on extended learning options. And of course, I'll just briefly remind us that this has been an ongoing discussion in an attempt to strategically determine how to secure more time for students, which could impact the calendar. And in essence, what we want to, wanted to brainstorm and review and do research around, centered on the fact, centered on options related to securing more time prior to the summative assessment linked to SOLs. So much review and work have been done at this point to open that discussion. And with that said, I will defer to Ms. Campson, and she will also engage the design needs in the process to kind of bring us up to date and then open up for discussion. Ms. Campson?
Thank you, Dr. Houston, members of the board, Dr. King. The administration has been looking into the possibility of securing a waiver for pre-Labor Day opening of the school as requested. Dr. Lynn Savigny will be joining us now. Dr. Savigny has done a lot of follow-up work in this area for you and actually has some timelines and some considerations that we need to think about, whether we would go with this year or next year. What would be some of the considerations if we were trying to go this year? So, Dr. Savigny, if you could share that with the board at this time.
Good afternoon. As you're aware, as we've been talking about, excuse me, as you've been talking, we've been talking about potentially submitting a waiver for a pre-Labor Day start. The base expectation from the state superintendent of public instruction is that he have that waiver in his possession 180 days prior to the start of the projected school year. So if we opt to move forward with the waiver for the 2015 school year, he would need to have that waiver in his possession in February at the very latest, so that, and we're still, we would be counting days quite literally to meet those. We believe that we could build the case from a good cause perspective in regard to the innovation and experimentation that we would be doing with our programming, but we do have some concerns in regard to trying to push forward for a 2015 start date in regard to adequate notification for staff and community. It would give us a little over six months in which we could publicize and share with the different community organizations, our churches, our civic organizations, our community organizations, as well as our employees. And we're not totally convinced that this would be enough time at this point because we know a great many of our employees have made summer plans for August already, as well as our community organizations have already made plans for summer, and we would be cutting into their potential revenue by lessening their summer season by several weeks. So there may be some downfall in regard to morale in our different buildings, as well as potentially damaging some existing partnerships with community agencies if we were to cut into their revenue at this point of the season when they've not prepared for that from a financial perspective.
Yes.
Before the end of the day, I'm going to make a motion that we make the application for beginning next year, a week, having a week prior to Labor Day, and then shortening the end of the year a week reciprocally. I'm going to make that, understanding full well the considerations that you mentioned, but if we have that waiver approved, then we have the option. If we don't make the waiver application, then we don't have the option. If on June 10th, I would have learned that all of these barriers have been created and these are the problems to going with it, then I certainly would listen to new information. But if we do not apply, then we do not have that option. And going back to the judge who heard the case for Norfolk Public Schools, objecting to the state thinking that what they should do is to take Norfolk Public Schools over, the question they asked was, is taking over a school the only thing that you can see that would help these students learn? I'm convinced that additional time, and one part of additional time, is starting a week before Labor Day and ending a week earlier, therefore not having any costs associated with it. I'm going to make a motion, I would like the opportunity to make a motion today, seeking a second and a vote, on applying for next year so that we have that option. In no way ignoring what you're saying, because those are very wise and prudent things to consider, but I don't want to eliminate that option for next year. That's just saying that I wish to have that option to make that motion.
Chairman Houston, members of the board, along that line, I would suggest that in addition to that, that the board would consider somewhat of a two-tiered option approach. One that would center on readiness and a sample calendar that would allow us to do what you've just described.
Yes.
In other words, what would the calendar look like in reference to a, before Labor Day start for 1516?
Right.
And the option two would show 1617 and that calendar as well. So that once we arrive at which particular status we were really going to move forward with implementation, then we'll be perfectly positioned to communicate to our audience as such as needed. So it will allow, it will give us both of those options if we were able to go forward in that way. I would like to ask the board to consider that type of approach as well.
And that is the timeline that we submitted to the board last week, that exact approach with a two-pronged perspective.
Yes.
So when we apply to the state now for either, for both options, if we decide not to pursue for whatever reason this year, does the application get null and void and we have to apply again for 1617, or does this application apply for both?
We would have to, we would have to submit an applicant, we would submit one waiver, but it would show two pathways.
Okay.
And it would be the state superintendent's call as to whether he would ask us to submit a waiver for, separate for the 1617 school year. But the information we've received has led us to understand that you can submit both pathways inside the one waiver.
Okay. Thank you.
Remember, for 40 years as an educator and for four years on this board, I'm motivated by one big question, and as will help students learn. I know there are a lot of considerations, but I would like to have that as an option. I think what you're proposing is certainly what I would support, but putting off the decision to make the application, to me, is the wrong thing to do. Making the application to give us that option is the better thing to do, in my opinion, but I just hope sometime before we close out today, I have the opportunity to make that motion. Concomitant with it, I wish to include something that probably 75% of our legislators who were at our breakfast said they would be willing to do, and that is to give them a template, to give them a draft letter that they might use to add their letter, their support. I did not hear a single person in attendance during a legislative breakfast who was not in favor of us doing that. As a matter of fact, two key individuals, a senator and a house member, basically said, this is what you need to do. I know recently someone has told us, do you think that you're going to get that waiver? Do you really think you'll get it because you're in the vacation zone? And I think if the state were to deny us that opportunity, they would be seriously in error. So I really want to make sure that we have the encouragement to our legislators to do what they said they were willing to do, and that is to support us in this option. But Dr. King, your proposal is simply a rational one, and again, I'd be open to new information as we got further on.
And if I could, I'll just support what Dr. Stewart said, in that he and I would work together to work with our legislative partners for them to support the waiver in a timely way upon the application submission. And we know they're entering the general assembly starting session tomorrow, I believe, right, as day one?
Today.
So I know we'll have quick work to do.
Right now.
Right. So is it today they start?
Yeah.
Okay. So I know we'll have quick work to do, but you're right, they were very amenable, and so we would just want to be in concert with the waiver application submission so that we are having a very strong package put together.
And we would provide the draft of that after it's gone through a peer review with the cabinet to the board during the February work session, because Dr. King and Dr. Houston would both need to sign that waiver before it could be submitted to the state.
Yes, one more.
Okay.
I'm sorry, and does that February timeline still allow us to go in the 180 days?
Yes. If we, if we submit it by February 19th, then that will allow us 186 days prior to the start of August 24th, which is actually a two-week window, not a one.
Okay. Thank you.
What I'm seeking is the time, the best time to make such a motion?
Well, so the two questions I would raise, one would be, does the board need any more information? Do we have any more questions on this matter at hand? Two, I would ask, if we, if there's, if it's necessary to vote, as we customarily do not during the work session unless it's absolutely necessary, is there a reason why we wouldn't be able to move formally on it in the meeting next Wednesday?
If it's consensus and if everyone agrees, I'm just trying to make it happen.
I understand.
I don't have a question or comment to what you just posed, but we have a question or comment in terms of options that we're considering, so.
Okay. All right, go ahead, because I'm going to return to my question. And if we feel it pressing and necessary to vote today in a work session, then we'll do that. If there is nothing that would keep us from voting on next Wednesday as we customarily would in a business meeting, then I would certainly suggest that we follow that practice, you know, again, unless otherwise necessary. I'm Mr. Jordan.
So just two questions. I think the, as you mentioned, Dr. Savigny, the key is the innovation piece of it. And I assume based upon the conversation that we're having, we're saying, pre-Labor Day start for the entire district, we're not necessarily looking at, and that's one of my questions, is are you all considering pilot schools in addition to trying to do it district-wide, or are you just solely looking at it from a district-wide perspective, especially if we're talking about trying to do something this coming school year in light of what you mentioned earlier in terms of staffing and getting out information and so forth, that maybe an option could be presenting some type of pilot at targeted schools if we didn't, if the administration didn't feel that trying to do the entire district, you know, didn't make sense at this time, was not logistically feasible. The other piece somewhat related to that, last year, the general assembly authorized funding to support the year-round school model. So while it still only does 180 days, it does allow for the, for an early start as a result of the program. I'm not, I think they appropriated funding for this past year and the upcoming year, and I just want to know if you had also looked at that and considered that as maybe the manner in which we could get a few or some schools going down that path versus, I mean, personally, I don't, I think the likelihood of us getting a district-wide approval is not all that likely, personally. But I think if we were to look at either leveraging the year-round model or being able to really make the case on the innovative piece and maybe tie it to some of our transformation initiatives, that may be more likely if we're trying to do something this coming, this coming school year. So just to know if you had any thoughts or if you all considered that at all.
Yes, because that was a part of the previous history discussion, so if you would.
When we were considering this last year.
Right.
And we worked with the community for about six months, and we had a whole little mini task force that worked with us throughout the community. They were very supportive of doing this district-wide because we found, once we really started talking to folks, that we have so many staff members who are spouses or significant others or life partners who work in different facilities, and there was great concern that one spouse would be on one calendar and the other would be on another. And we also have siblings who attend because of our different specialty programs and choice options who are in different feeder patterns. And we had parents who were very concerned that they would have children on different calendars because of their choices and where they've made choices to put their children. So we backed away from the pilot perspective based on community and staff feedback of, let's either do it all or don't do it at all, simply because of those unique relationships from building to building.
Yes.
Once you submit.
Do we answer your second question?
No, she addressed, there's.
They tie together.
She had covered the both at once.
Yes.
Once you submit these waivers, how long does it take for the state to notify you that the waivers have been approved? What is the process there?
They go to, they'd go to Dr. Staples as the superintendent of public instruction, and he and his staff would vet them, and then he would present them to the state board. So it would be on their timeline once it's submitted. It could be anywhere from, you know, 30 to 120 days depending upon their timeline. You know, generally, the earlier you can submit them, the better, which we're definitely in line with having them ready for the 2016 model. We're really cutting it exceptionally close with 2015. But we can have it ready to go in February, but we are cutting it close. It doesn't give them a lot of time to review it, and we will need to start letting people know that this is a possibility and that we won't know until it's finally approved, and it could be June before we get that approval. And we're asking people to kind of wait on plans and summer plans and finalizing things for the month of August until it has had time to work its way through the state board system, which was part of our concern about morale and community partnerships.
Yes.
And this was mentioned a little bit earlier, but want to reemphasize that the discussion for us as far as extended time and the waiver has centered on, of course, a start of school prior to Labor Day, but not a change in the number of days that students would attend, which means that theoretically speaking, you, we're looking at the least impact on the budget, because you're not adding days.
Mm-hmm.
It's just how you adjust your calendar to secure additional instructional days prior to a summative assessment. And so that has been the discussion for us thus far.
And Dr.
And with, you know, if we are able to, you know, access additional funds, grant dollars
or whatever the case might be, then there are other additional items that, you know, could come into play that could allow us to have additional time for students too during the regular school day, because that's important for us as well in terms of how to have that done. And schools are doing some of those things individually with how they use their safety net funds, et cetera. But if we are able to secure additional grant dollars in addition to this piece, then we would be looking at how to give chosen students that needed additional services to.
And I just wanted to remind the school board that we currently have a survey out right now for community members to vote on two calendar options for next year, and neither one of those options includes a start date prior to Labor Day. So that would be another piece that we would need to consider.
I should bring that up because I saw the survey, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on what we've already heard? And I think that, and let me say, I'm 100% in support of us pursuing this, but I also think that we should be, we as in the school board, very mindful of all of those little moving parts related to families, spouses, community, summer camps that coincide with the, so I think we should all keep it in mind as we, as we move forward towards this. So now, back to Dr. Stewart's desire to vote today, I just, I want to hear from you all if you, you know, feel the need that we need to act on it today, then so be it. If it's something that will not in the next seven days make a critical difference, then perhaps we will consider having it on the agenda for the business meeting.
What would help me is I would like to know what my other board members feel about that.
Exactly.
In other words, if, if it's going to certainly be addressed.
Sure.
In the way that I would prefer for it be addressed next, next meeting.
Right.
Then that's one thing.
Okay.
If there's great opposition, then that's another.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm just curious about how my colleague board members see it.
Okay. What are your thoughts, please?
Dr. Stewart, I would support you in your pursuit of making the motion for us to pursue the waiver for the early start date, and if we have the option of doing two different formats for the waiver, I'm comfortable with that as well. We've been talking about this for years now, and I think that now is the appropriate time to take action. And this is not new to Virginia, it would be new to Norfolk Public Schools, but we have a significant amount of students who are in need of some extra learning time, and if this is something that we can do to help the learning process, then let's do it. So I would support you if we took the vote next week, I would support you, support you if we took the vote today.
I agree that I would support the waiver application that has the two pathways, and what we can do is just take a consensus, just, you know, what's the pulse of the board, knowing that next week the vote would take place, as we typically vote, but knowing now what likely the vote would be, so that the administration has a very strong indication of what's happening. So it does almost appear on the consent agenda if it doesn't already, or if it won't. So that you're clearly indicating you'd like this waiver application, two paths.
Yes.
Therefore, we have the decision-making option.
Thank you very much.
Right.
Any others?
I'm, I'm fine. I just would like to encourage the administration, not necessarily for this school year, but when the year-round opportunity comes up, that we look at it. We've had year-round schools in Norfolk before, PB Young and Dream Keepers. I appreciate the balancing. Those of us that have multiple children understand that, but I think we've talked about our efforts to be child-focused, and maybe that may not be the model for, for some children. But if we really think that the early start is going to benefit children, then I think we should try to do that as much as we can, because I just, again, I think if we go the, I support going for the entire district. I don't think it's likely to occur, but I do think it's likely to do it on a school-by-school basis if we identify certain schools where you think it would work.
Let's do it.
Mr. Jordan, in no way do I want this proposal or this idea to stand in the way of potentially year-round school. I don't think they're mutually exclusive.
Right, now I was just saying.
Hopefully, there are many things over the next several years that can be done to, to add intentional teaching time to the calendar.
Oh, no, I agree with you. I just wanted to put out there that if resources are going to be consumed exploring this, that if the administration feels it's appropriate, I would just ask that we consider the year-round option as a, as a tool as well.
Dr. Stewart, I.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I don't prefer too much. He's old. He's much older than me.
I'll, I can support this. I think we should, should put out a consent agenda, should be a, a form of, this is a big deal.
Sure.
Okay. I'm here. I also support this initiative with the idea that we would have some flexibility because if this comes back, of course, if this comes back late, it's going to be difficult to put into effect. So, but I think this is important for us to do.
Your question about whether there was additional questions, is it just about the pre-Labor Day start or about time at all? Because I have other things regarding other elements of time, so.
And I'm, I'm good with that. So next week, we will put it on the agenda, but not consent agenda, to take formal action on this particular matter.
Which is just the pre-Labor Day waiver application.
Yes.
Which is one part of the conversation regarding extended learning time.
Yes, I have, I have a lot of comments regarding other things with the concomitant initiative for legislators to be able to respond.
Okay.
Could I just be also, we've, we've already, 30 minutes now into that time.
And we do have another matter under major milestones, master milestones.
Regarding time, I have other comments.
Okay, go ahead.
And they could be addressed later in future presentations. And they go to the idea of after-school time, Saturday school time, summer school time, just more time. Whereas they're not included in this, and I know that Dr. King has said that you're always looking for grants and other opportunities. Now I'm speaking primarily, Mr. Jordan, about focus and priority schools. I would hope that we could have some items that could be budget-related items for possibilities of after-school time, Saturday school time, summer school time, particularly for focus and priority schools. I would like to see some options that could be included as budget items, and that's one of the main reasons for addressing all of these in a timely way that we did. I know it wasn't included yet, you can't do everything at once, but, yes, you can, right? You've been doing it for years. But I would really like to see some options and suggestions for those kinds of elements, understanding well that the fact that we offer after-school time at one school, or offer summer school time, or offer Saturday school time, it may not be taken. But I, again, with 40 years of experience, think to offer it could be useful, and I want to focus that request for budget item consideration on the focus and priority schools. Not to omit eventually it for all schools, but I'd like to begin where obviously we have the most need. And I wondered if that could be, those things could come to us in a pretty timely way to allow us to consider for this budget cycle.
We can certainly pull that together for you. Currently, those are funded through individual school safety net funds.
Right.
Each building creates their own extended time, whether it's before school, after school, on Saturday. Each principal has the prerogative to craft his or her plan based on the needs of their community. So we can pull some numbers together in terms of financial, rather quickly.
And I'm very grateful for all this time to talk about time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
One other question, is there a, in the write-up, there were options around extended day, is there a recommendation for us to consider for extended day, or are we just looking at extended year this time?
Extended year.
So no, no recommendation this time for extended day?
No, nothing that would have implications for board and board approval. The discussion for extended day at this point has really centered on the master schedule. for extended day at this point has really centered on the master schedule and empowering principals and their teams to adjust their master schedules as necessary, to secure safety net time, extended blocks, et cetera. And in some cases, they have been able to move forward with that by pinpointing their safety net dollars to help assist with that. So from a district standpoint and creating a standard model for extended day, we have not done that at this point. But of course, we're exploring that though, too. And of course, implications for budget because that would.
Well, that's why I was asking, because I saw in there you had the one where there was discussion around shortening lunches, some other things.
Right.
And then the other around the cost of per day if we were to extend it. So I didn't know if you were looking at for next year anything around the extended day that we needed to consider in our upcoming budget.
Right. We've not narrowed it to that point yet.
Okay.
Still in the midst of that discussion. I don't know if you're going to offer additional information through the discussion with the committee and the group outside of what I've said thus far, but.
Well, we did submit extended day option number two in here, which shows us adding one hour per school day. And then we've got the finances associated with that. It seemed to be cost prohibitive at this point simply because we are so far in the hole. But the cost of extending one additional day, just to give us a ballpark, is approximately $935,000. By the time you add in all the salaries and, you know, you added seven days, that of adding one hour, that would equate to that roughly a million dollars.
But if cost was not an issue, were there a certain number of days that you all were considering as being in the best interest for our efforts?
Well, the team, and there are several other members of the team who are here in the room, looked at it from kind of an all-or-nothing perspective. If we had, if we were dreaming, using Dr. Stewart's terms, then we would like to see that hour added across the board in all schools to extend the school day by one hour. But when we broke that down and looked at it in terms of finances, it, there was a pretty stout barrier that we couldn't find a way to work ourselves around as we worked through this budget cycle. And I don't know if any of the other folks who are on the team want to share anything in regard to that or not.
Now that it's coming, I would encourage us to move to the next topic.
Was the concern of extending the school day for one hour universal for all schools, or was it just for a few certain schools in particular, going back to Dr. Stewart's point about having after-school programs or extended learning times before or after?
The team had conversations in regard to, did we want to just do something for focus or priority or schools that were not fully accredited? But then we ran back into community concern about having different schools on different schedules, and we were very sensitive to that. So we were trying to find a way to do it across the board, and the financial implications were quite stout from that perspective.
All right. I'm sure this discussion regarding time will certainly continue as there are the items that we know that are beyond just the pre-Labor Day start. Let's take just a few minutes. We've used our time on that matter, on the partnerships update. Dr. King?
Chairman Houston, members of the board, partnership updates for priority and focus schools, building support for transformation. I will begin by stating that the board will recall that through the discussions centering on transformation as well as the discussions centering on moving implementation of the strategic plan forward, both concepts, which are all interwoven, were connected with training and moving forward at the school level to secure support in the form of partnerships, but also to be inclusive of advisory teams at each school. And so, and that is, that continues to be an important action step and consideration for us. But this afternoon, we wanted to give you an update on partnerships as it relates to focus and priority schools. But remember that really what we want to see happen in addition to this would be an advisory team per school, each school, that would consist of a cross-section of stakeholders that are part of that school community, that would be involved in the whole notion of supporting the school and enhancing, moving the strategies that are important for the school forward, as well as building more transparency in terms of what the challenges are within the school, and as well as what the strategies are for addressing those challenges and continuously keeping those groups up to date and getting support from the partners. With that said, I will refer to Dr. Williford.
Good afternoon, Dr. Houston, members of the board, Dr. King. I would just like to first say you've received an update from the focus and priority schools that we serve in terms of the community support that each school has at this point. And I would also like to state that it is the, it is a standard for principals to gain the community support. And when we talk about support for our schools, we're talking about support for different programs that our schools have, such as PVIS, looking for incentives for those programs, services, and resources that the school may not have. So principals work in an ongoing manner trying to obtain partners. And you receive a list, a large list of partners that our schools have partnered with. We would also like to just, just to actually piggyback off of what Dr. King said in the intro, that it's a turnaround principle to continue to provide ongoing mechanisms for family and community support. So that is an ongoing discussion in addition to just gathering community partners, but actually establishing these advisory councils that could help support the school improvement process. So with that said, I would like to just address any questions that you may have pertaining to the update that you've received.
Questions?
Yes, Dr. Stewart. You mentioned turnaround principles, and of course, you know, one of the biggest turnaround principles was more time. So we've dealt with that. Thank you for this. You know, we want them for all schools, and I know you want them too. I would hope before completing this school year, that sometime in May, following SOL testing and whatever, perhaps, that some curriculum-relevant partnerships could be highlighted by each of the focus and priority schools about the things that they're anticipating. You know, every year that you're in a curriculum-relevant partnership, you refine its focus on instruction. It would be pleasing to have maybe a few highlighted that are planned for next year as they become refined, as people work on them. Again, more time can be found, but for me, a term I used significantly was curriculum-instructional-relevant partnerships, where they are actually helping with the learning. And I think in that can be found more time. So I would be interested, we've had some wonderful presentations from your colleagues in the schools. I would really be interested in seeing that. And I know you're seeking that, and I would certainly be interested, and I think Dr. Savigny and others said, we have them for all schools. Certainly, it's not that I'm disinterested in that. I just wanted, for the sake of time, to focus on the focus and priority schools. But I would love to hear some prideful plans for next year on the curriculum-instructional-relevant partnerships that are planned for these focus and priority schools. And thank you very much. Good presentation.
Dr. Williford, are these partnerships, are these folks on the advisory team, or just a few select? How is that done?
I would have to say the advisory team component of what we're doing is underdevelopment. We are looking to establish a framework of how many community partners, parent representatives, that would be on that advisory committee. You may have seen, not the forecast, but even in our corrective action plans, we've added an essential action to help structure, add structure to the partnerships and the work that they would do. So I couldn't answer exactly how many from each school at this time, but that is part of the structure that we will have.
I think the advisory team is a great idea, so I'm thrilled that we're going to do that for these schools. And then the other thing I would ask is, how are we going to measure the success of those advisory teams? And how are we measuring the success of our partnerships today? So I pose that as probably an open-ended question that I think we need to quantify, qualify at some point, so that whatever we know is working well because we've determined it to do so, that we then can share it with others.
And I was going to say something along similar measures that, well, the first question that I have was, Dr. King, when do you think that these advisory teams will be in full swing? Are you thinking fall of this coming school year?
I would think we're probably looking at school year 15, 16.
15, 16.
To have them in place by the end of that school year because with that comes additional training for building their blueprints, their strategic plans, which requires that you bring in and include a microcosm of your own school and community. And by doing so, you begin to build your advisory teams. So various schools are already moving forward with that training. They're not all complete. We're not close to being complete with that. And that's going to have to also evolve into next school year. So with that being done, I would expect that we will have all of those schools trained to develop their own blueprints in the form of site-based plans, in addition to building their advisory teams during the next school year. Doing the work, beginning the work, moving forward with the work this current year, but also moving into next year in terms of being, building the readiness for that type of planning and having, and the utilization of those advisory groups, as well as having the, anticipating the potential partnership with Advanced Head, Sykes-Kasey, to come in and look at what we're doing and give feedback and input as well. And that's a part of it.
So I would say that if the plan is realistically that they would be in full function by the end of the school year, that we work hard to make sure that the PTA organization at each of the focus and priority schools is getting as much support as we can.
Right.
Because nothing stops any of these community partners from joining their PTAs. And I would think that the PTA doesn't necessarily have privilege or can't sit directly with the principal and, you know, add comment on curriculum issues or ways to help struggling students. But I would say in the meantime, if we can continue to support their PTAs, that that would be something that we, and I know that we're doing this ongoing, but to continue the support for them.
Sure. And one would anticipate that active members of PTA would also be represented on the advisory teams as well. And the structure of the advisory teams for schools and the function is one of collaboration, giving input, feedback, plus principal being the lead facilitator, providing the information in terms of where the school is at that particular point, and what the strategies are for moving forward, and what the challenges are. And then when you have business partners and PTA officials, teachers, parents, et cetera, and the business owners, then each individual has a role and could anticipate a particular role in terms of how they could help move the direction of the school forward.
Okay.
So it's for more transparency and more support of those schools.
And Dr. King, if I may just remind the board that last year, when we were working with the community, the little mini task force on the calendar, one of the task forces that we had was in regard to the parent advisory council. So we had a community group who worked with us for about six months to come up with the outline and the vision and the purpose of our parent advisory councils. And that's all ready to go. And we're slowly rolling that out through the different schools that clearly identifies who should serve and their function and their roles. So we're excited about that as we move forward.
Dr. Stewart, then Mr. Jordan?
I'll follow Mr. Jordan. I just had a question in terms of, I mean, obviously, most of these partnerships are ones that are established by the principal at the building level for support. But we also had in there, I consider United for Children more of an initiative. So can you just describe, and I have to do this now, but maybe in the future, I'd just like to get an understanding of the process by which an initiative like United for Children is implemented and adopted at a school versus, you know, being able to go to Chick-fil-A and get coupons, if you know what I mean. So I just noticed in the list of partners that United for Children in particular was listed as potential, and then I didn't see listed, but I know is occurring at some schools, communities, and schools. So I'd just like to get some feedback on how things are going with those types of initiatives and what our strategy is to grow them, if that's the direction that we're going to go.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, I'm sorry. One item not included, and I know this can easily be included in future presentations on the school formerly known as Lafayette Winona, which we will rename tonight, hopefully. And that is, I'd be very interested in the aspirational partnership possibilities there. I think as we announce this thing, it will be very exciting. And I think that alone could be a very important part. Yet I want to emphasize that I hope that these are curriculum-instructional-relevant partnerships where these folks are helping us actually with the time and the teaching and learning. But I would love to have that integrated into future presentations. I know Dr. Charbonnet is assisting with that initiative, but I would love to have that integrated into future presentations on the school formerly known as Lafayette. Thank you.
Thank you. We will go back now to the top of the originally posted agenda, 2.01 transformation update. Dr. King?
Chairman Houston, members of the board, 2.01 transformation update will consist of an emphasis on student impact, on student achievement with parent schools. You've received several introductory kinds of presentations in terms of the logistics and dynamics on how that's moving forward. This afternoon's intent is to give you an update in terms of how that particular reconfiguration has impacted and is impacting, in the process of impacting student achievement and progress monitoring, et cetera. So with that said, I believe we have school representatives coming forward. PB Young is represented, as well as Tidewater Park, Fair Lawn, and Poplar Hall. And I will ask Dr. Charbonnet to begin with opening comments.
Good afternoon, Dr. King, members of the board. We are pleased to present how the transformation initiatives are going thus far since we started the beginning of this year. We're excited to present a snapshot of the data and how students are progressing in the transformation schools. I'm going to begin today introducing Ms. Cassandra Duke-Washington, the principal of Poplar Hall's, and Ms. Michelle Logan, the principal of Fair Lawn.
Good afternoon. I would like to introduce to you my instructional leadership team that I have brought with me today that will be a part of this presentation. I have with me Denise Spico. Would you please stand? She's a math specialist. I have Mrs. Ann Atwell-McBarner, who is instructional interventionist. And I also have with me April Duncan, who's a reading specialist.
I'd like to also do the same. I have beside me my assistant principal, Charlene Bellington. And I have with me also Sally Adams, who is my math specialist.
We are delighted to share with you today how we are refining curriculum and instructional development as we progress towards developing readers and writers through through content, through deepening content knowledge by embracing specific strategies as we teach them habits, skills and behaviors. We are focusing on organization skills, student success and academic rigor. I have brought with me April Duncan so that she can share with you a lesson plan that will show how we are infusing Norfolk Public Schools' lesson plan format, the WICHER lesson plan format from our AVID program, Bloom's Taxonomy, as well as a priority instructional strategy from Poplar Halls. Mrs. April Duncan, please come forward.
In embracing one of AVID's essential components, one of the others, of instruction, we created a lesson plan that was designed as a three-part cross-curricular plan that included all content areas. And so what we tried to do was implement Bloom's Taxonomy, so that we could address depth of knowledge, Marsha Tate's brain-based learning strategies. We also wanted to include the Essentials of AVID, in which we were teaching children to learn, learning to read, learning to write and learning to learn. And then finally, we also included the objectives, which are, of course, our Virginia Department of Standards of Learning, and then all within a before, during and after structure or framework, which was organized so that we could address our main WICHER strategy, which is SQ five R. So what we did, and I'm going to use visuals here, is we divided the lesson plan into three parts. The first one is we call our get ready, get set, go portion, which is noted in the green. And in that particular portion, we are unpacking the standards, making them into ICAN statements, within activating prior knowledge, introducing our comprehension skills. We're sharing, we're front-loading vocabulary, making predictions. And then our first strategy, which once again, we are addressing SQ five R as our main WICHER strategy, we included surveying the text. And during that time, the children are looking at the text and they are surveying it for specific text features that help them to make predictions. And then the yellow section of our text, you'll see, we call that proceed with caution, which is the meat of our lesson. And in that particular area, what we're having the children do is we're having them think about their thinking. We're making notations, we're doing a lot of closer reading, we're questioning, making connections, having children use fixed-up reading strategies, so that they're successful readers. They're determining their importance of different items. And also, once again, it addresses SQ five R. And that's why you'll see first read and you'll see second read there, because during that first read, we're talking about the reading strategy, introducing it again and discussing it, making connections, going back and identifying text features and how they work within the text. Because we're trying not to do things in isolation. And then there's a second read, and that's why you see that on the other side, where we're visiting key elements and we're talking a lot and we're discussing a lot with our children about what they're reading, so that they're going back and they're thinking about their thinking and using large amounts of metacognition. And if you could scroll up for me, once again, we're still in our yellow section. Remember, I said that's the meat of our lesson, and that's the third read. Where that, at that time, the children are going to be recording, because what we're doing is we're making that connection between reading and writing. And so in this portion, we're incorporating writing. We're going to ask the children to use note-taking, we're including our graphic app organizers, and we're also doing questioning. If you scroll up a little bit, there's also our discussion questions, because once again, the most important thing is getting children to reflect on what they're learning as they're reading, because that's what we do as natural readers. And then finally, our last section, which you'll see the red section, we call that our mission accomplished section. And then the mission accomplished section, we're revising and confirming our predictions, which we initially also could have made in that green area, our get ready, get set, go. And then we're summarizing, we're retelling, we're synthesizing our information, and then we're sharing some final connections. So that's our review and reflect section. And if you take a note, you'll see those W's, those C's and those I's. Those are in different colors. That's once again addressing the WICHER strategies, which once again, I said is an essential component. And that's, we just noted that those are the particular strands right there for WICHER. Okay?
Offering teacher supports during this period of time. We are very happy that we have large grade-level teams that are able to bring shared strategies and expertise to the planning table. We like that the ability to craft the master schedule allows us to increase allotted time for these collaborative planning sessions. We assign our reading and math specialists to participate in weekly sessions to assist with unpacking, but especially with the expectation for rigor. We also have assigned, Fair Lawn is unique in this situation in that we have nine new teachers. So we have assigned them all teacher mentors, and that they meet monthly to address their specific needs. And then the professional development with AVID trainers for both schools.
Teacher mentors are from the school?
Yes.
And they are teachers who have years of experience?
Yes. Recognizing that both teachers and students need differentiated support, we use iStation for our specialized students to increase the capacity for, and provide targeted instruction that is identified through the data that we collect. We tier not only our students and their needs, but we are looking at tiering the needs of our teachers. We have what we call turnaround Tuesday. And in that particular time, they get a chance to meet with myself, Ms. Felton, and provide that individual personal support that a teacher needs. There's also walkthroughs that take place monthly with leadership teams and/or grade-level teams. Just so that you can get an idea of how we differentiate the tiered groups, Mrs. Fickel, the math specialist, is going to explain what's going on in this tier lesson.
We continually look and monitor at what we're doing within our tier groups. We always have our tier three groups, and they are always a hands-on group. They are hands-on, so they have the concreteness of the building blocks that they need, because that's what our tier three students are missing, are the building blocks. So they are always structured with an instructional member of the team. It could be the classroom team member, or it could also be an instructionalist that comes in and works with them. The tier two group always, all, excuse me, also always has an instructional team member with them. It could be the classroom teacher or the instructional, instructionalist that comes in to work with them. Their level is a little bit less guided from the teacher. They take that on themselves. They're going to the pictorial representation. So we've had the concrete in the tier three, we have the pictorial in the tier two. In the tier one, they're pretty much basically on their own. These are the students that get it the first time around. So we're asking them to do a higher level order of thinking, and they are coming up with their actual abstract things that they are coming up with in this lesson that is modeled right here. It's a pattern group, and they are to come up with their own pattern and then they share it with their other team members. And they have the collaborative method, that they have to talk about what they did to develop it, how they develop it, and how they're going to change it to meet their own needs.
As we go forward, we look at a goal-driven culture. And so Ms. Felton will tell you a little bit about this.
One of the benefits that we've had as a transformation school is to reestablish our culture. And part of that AVID is a culture for rigor and a culture for I can do it and I'm going to succeed. And we've really put a concentrated effort in meeting with all of the children so that they establish their own goals. They recognize what skills they need to possess to be a successful learner, and that's really part of AVID. You know what it takes for you to be successful. The children have to recognize what they need to be successful. And we've really put that into the culture of the school. And so we do have a quick video clip of a student sharing her goal and how she is working towards her goal this year.
This is my student, Davi, and it tries to grab our test scores for each student. And the thing we want to do is improve each one's tape. And after we grab all of the tests, we go write the goal. And so you want, so when you write your goal, you always make that you try and achieve it the next time you take the test.
What are your goal for January?
My goal for January is to have at least an eighty or above on my math.
Why not?
Because I've noticed I've had a hard time in math, and so I want to make sure that my math scores.
What are you going to get there?
I will practice, say multiplication on the Saturday and see how fast I can, I can get to the problem.
Tell me about your net.
The net is to show how many tests you pass and your behavior for attendance. And it's also a confidence booster. So each time you earn a point D, you can say, yay, I passed the test.
How many did you have?
I have eight, seven orange and four blue.
So as you can see, the culture of success for the school is a constant focus for all of us. Even our children who struggle as our special education students at times, we meet with them one-on-one to discuss their growth. Because again, the seventy mark may for them may be difficult, but they really need to see and hear that they're growing and that what their efforts are doing are making a difference. And so it's been a great year for them.
All of our instructional practices are data-driven. So at this time, we're going to have Mrs. Duncan to come up to share with you how we analyze data and talk a little bit about more than what you see here. These are just performance bands, but there is a lot more to data-driven decision-making. So she's going to quickly share what goes on with the data.
One of the things that we do is our quick item analysis. Each month, the children are given a monthly CFA. And once they're given a monthly CFA, the teachers are given an item analysis sheet that has to be completed. And what they note on there is the objectives, what the weaknesses were, and then they also note what the strengths were as well. And then what we do is we take that and inform, this is just some of the basic data. What we do is we take that, we take a deeper look at the objectives, how the students perform, and then we just decide, we decide on our instructional practices that we're going to do to meet those weaknesses.
And this is a...
And that's just the math slide, so we'll go ahead to the other one.
And the next slide we also have is the Fair Lawn data for December reading, and December math as well. And again, if you combine the yellow and green, that's our target to get those, all of the students to move over, to move into the different bands. In reading, I do recognize that we have a lot of students that are sitting in that yellow band because our students are so literal. And they really struggle with the inferential thinking and the inferential questioning. And so that's something that we're targeting for remediation and higher-level questioning and getting students to respond in an inferential way to the text that they're reading. So as you can see with our reading data, we do have some...
Sally Adams will come forward and talk about the math.
All right, so if you look at our math, like Ms. Felton was saying, the green and the yellow combined, those are kids who are fifty or above. So I feel really good about this. And what I want to talk about is the fact that because we are just three-five, we're really able to narrow our focus. And I think that that's been really helpful for us this year. One of the things that we do is we can then use this data and then, one of my primary roles is to help influence the tier one instruction, the first instruction that the children are getting. So I focus on things like meeting with the teams, planning, questioning that they're going to use, activities that they're going to use, making sure that we're doing all those things that Denise Fickel was talking about, the manipulatives, the pictorial, all of those things that we need to do. And I think if we look at the data, it looks like we're doing a pretty good job accomplishing our goal on that. I'm pretty proud of that data. But then the thing that we do is then we look at those kids who are in the yellows, and then we have our other group of people who are in there. We have our part-time retired teachers. We have our instructional interventionists. We have me, who can come in and then give those kids a second, or even maybe a triple dose on some of those things that we're doing here. One of the things that I think you'll see in one of the slides coming up is that we have an entire wall that's kind of based around these colors. And Ms. Logan can address some of the things that we're doing with those.
You'll see the wall pictured here. This is the wall that represents our entire school and how you look at our data. We know that at the beginning of the year, it was an inverted triangle. And so we had lots of students in tier three or the red. We're very proud that they are moving now into the yellow and expect that that will be green in the near future. And speaking of safety nets, Mrs. Barner is going to share with you our rotation schedule so that we can make sure that each tiered group can get instruction. Mrs. Barner, would you come up very quickly and discuss that tiered rotation schedule? This is to make sure that those small group are getting the time that they need according to identify weaknesses, deficits and challenges.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is our master schedule. We have revisited our schedule several times this school year, trying to meet the needs of our students. So the communication yield block, we try to have that two-hour block not interrupted. However, that doesn't always work, but we make sure that the students receive the two-hour block of the English block. And also with math, we make sure they receive the necessary time for math. Now with the rotation schedule, me being the interventionist, I come into the classroom, because we use the push-in model. We do not bring the students out of the classroom, because we don't want to lose a lot of travel time. So between Mrs. Duncan and myself, and we also have a tutor in our school building who helps with the rotation. So between the three of us, we are rotating between the groups. And we try to make sure that our special education students have a triple dose of reading and reading instruction especially, and with math, they have a double dosage. So as you can see, with me working in kindergarten, I usually work with the groups for like twenty minutes. And I also work in second grade, and in second grade, I use thirty minutes. So we have a rotation one, a rotation two and a rotation three for the English block. And with math, we have a rotation one and two.
Thank you. Next steps the road ahead. On January thirtieth, both schools will receive professional development with AVID trainers. At that time, we will learn more about note-taking, inquiry and writing to learn. The interventionists, they will be cross-checking, they will cross-check all schedules to ensure students in tiers two and three are double and triple dosing the areas of math and reading, which was the schedule we had just shown you. We will provide additional support in math and reading using an abbreviated resource block. We will continue to use instructional support applications, star reading, math, iStation, ACHIE three thousand and direct reading assessments to monitor our students' progress. And so as we move forward, we want to make sure that we have constant, consistent feedback provided to our teachers. We want to focus on delivery of the highest level of rigor in the classrooms on a daily basis. We want to be extremely present and vigilant throughout the schools and the classroom. We want to have a watchful eye on the movement of students within the tiers, the who and the what is needed. We do whatever it takes for our AVID scholars.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? Yes.
This year, would you say that you are immersed in the AVID way of educating students? Would you say fifty percent, eighty percent, ninety percent?
School-wide for Poplar Halls, I will say at least thirty-five to forty-five percent, because I think we are ahead of even some of the AVID other primary schools. When we had a visit from them, I think we were really ahead of the game. And they did speak somewhat about Poplar Halls and Fair Lawn becoming the model schools for the AVID program. So we're hoping to reach that goal and put the city of Norfolk on the map.
So you would say, but even with the wonderful compliment that you received about being a model school, you're still only thirty-five percent implementing the strategies and the concepts around AVID?
There's a...
Go ahead.
There's a three-year process. Ms. Felton, do you want to share a little bit about that?
The AVID certification process is about three years. So working with the AVID trainers, they expect during these three years that more of our... that more of our teachers will be trained in avid. As we look at evaluating our avid process, we'll go through different benchmarks throughout the year where we'll have pre- and post-assessments on our avid strategies. So our goal this year is to have a couple of benchmarks that we've identified in which at least one teacher per grade level has embraced.
Great.
As we go through for each of the consecutive years after, we want a whole school-wide embrace of the avid principles. And that's where it takes a little bit of time to get the training and then the philosophy and all of that.
I just think that it's, it's very, this is wonderful. This is going to be our year-one of baseline data. And with the separation of the two schools and identifying exactly how much you all are implementing the year-one of the, of the avid training is going to be important for noting this in our baseline data so that we can see progress years two, years three, years four. And build upon that if we have, we see success, if we see areas that we need to change or modify. And that goes into my second question. Your safety net monies, have you all, do you all feel that your safety net monies are adequate for the needs that you have in your building? And do you have any needs that are being unmet right now that we, as the board and budget time, need to take into consideration?
Well, we can always use more money. However, I was.
We have that on record now.
I was able to only hire one part-time tutor with my safety net funds. And the reason being it's only one person because I wanted her to work from the beginning, from September all the way through the end of the year. She works four days a week, four hours a day. And the money I had would only pay for one tutor so that I could have her from September through June. Because I wanted her to be a part of the program and to grow with us so that she can learn strategies as well.
And I think that just varies from school to school and the need. Being the three-five school, I think we may have had a tad bit more money. And we have been able to hire three retired teacher tutors. And they started in October, and we're hoping to take them through May. So we have a good.
So you would say that the tutors have brought you the most bang for the buck, so to speak, with your safety net monies?
That's what we're, yes. The people.
That's right. That's right.
Yes, can you speak to the tiering of the needs of the teacher? Can you explain that, what that process is and how you handle that?
Sure. We look at what individual students need. So we also wanted to do the same with our teachers. What is it that they professionally need? Some who are very seasoned don't need maybe the classroom management. They may need some specific instructional delivery kinds of things. So when you bring those teachers in, you want to focus in on just their need rather than giving a general professional development on classroom management or a general professional development on how to teach a specific skill. It's very tailored to what that teacher needs. And we did that by looking at their data, their classroom observations, and the focus walks that we've taken this year.
So all teachers are tiered?
All.
And I have one other question.
Sure. You might want to recommend this board on a tier.
Tier one on this side.
I did have a question about the data. I was looking at the tier-three, I'm assuming that the red is tier-three. And I noticed that quite a striking difference in the tier-three, a change of about perhaps around twenty percent and first-grade reading and also to second grade, both reading and math. Very striking in the math. Any ideas to what it, what happens to our tier-three students and going from first grade to second grade that creates such a larger gap there?
The second-grade curriculum has more rigor. They has, that goes along with my math specialist as she talked about, concrete, abstract, and pictorial. So with that progression, there are steps and structures. There are things that have to play, take place prerequisite skills that may not be intact. Some of the prior knowledge may not have a connection to the new relationship of a, a new objective. So what we're looking at on the lower level, that some of, in K-one, K and one, the instruction is not as rigorous. Teachers still have a mindset that those students need lower-level work. So we have to change mindsets of teachers to let them know, really, it doesn't matter the age of the child because they can actually learn whatever we teach them. So it is a mindset that we are working on now. Within popular halls, I have like a model classroom from pre-K up to two. They are trying more rigorous instructional practices to actually see if the children can learn them and what the results will be. So we're kind of anxious to see what's going to happen at the end of the year, especially with the pre-K.
Anecdote and testimony in a minute, but first, Dr. Birdsong is here. And she is very clear on going after potential teachers for the future. The young lady that was depicted here. If you could get an application from Dr. Birdsong, you know, she's got a lot, long way to go. She was, she was pretty instructive.
Yeah, should bring her here.
She was good. My testimony, my anecdote goes to personal experience and it goes to something that Ms. Adams said. She said, "I feel really good." We're judging schools and educational experiences by numbers, and that's good. But, and I wish she would tell that today, tell your colleague at Ingleson, tell her that I had a really, I felt really good about leaving her school today. And you know, you could say that when he left our schools before the holidays, he felt really good. Sometimes, it's the nurture and environment that you feel, not just the numbers that you judge. And that can lead to better numbers later, but really did appreciate the opportunity to be in your schools and have a curriculum-relevant opportunity. Thank you.
Just one question. The data in your charts, does that marry to the data and dates that are in SchoolNet?
You meaning the chart that was across the wall? Yes, and it also includes other data. So each one of those little cards represented the whole child. Is that what you're talking about?
Right, so if I looked at.
Oh, no, you're looking at a different chart.
On these graphs.
Oh, okay.
If you have Fairlon November twenty-fourth, or November twenty-fourteen reading data, and I go into SchoolNet and I look at the CFA for November twenty-fourteen reading, is that where this information being pulled from?
Yes.
Yes, we pulled it directly from SchoolNet.
Or yours in School.
No, because it gives you.
Thank you. You're looking at these questions.
Searching for my partner.
She can handle it. You can do it.
Good afternoon, I'm Duana White, principal at PB Young Elementary School.
Good afternoon, Chairman Houston and the board and all of those present. I'm Sharon Phillips, principal at Tidewater Park Elementary. You ready?
Yep, alright. And our presentation is just a little different. We came from the focus of, is it working? Is our, is the transformation working? And so our first slide. We just talked a little bit about Montessori. Both schools are Montessori schools. And because of the transformation, we did kind of have to start over just a bit. We've had to take our teachers through training. We had to recruit quite a few teachers because of the transformation. And the other part of the Montessori piece that we're working on is in, Montessori is student-led. And so we're working to ensure that everything is student-centered and student-led. However, we want to make sure that it's planned by the teacher. So it's student-led, but we want it to be organized and SOL-driven. So a traditional Montessori, it's more student-led, student-centered. I decide today what I want to learn and how I want to learn it. We're trying to ensure that it's direct from the teacher, but there are choices from the students. So we, you'll see a lot of workstations in our buildings. However, those workstations will allow the students to have hands-on, hands-on experiences in our child center, okay? So, is it working from a student impact? The answer is yes. From a student impact, we are able to have a school-wide behavior discipline plan, and it's working at PB Young. Our kids are focused on earning shields, very child-centered for my babies. Sharon has a program.
Whereby they, whereby they earn Eagle bucks if they adhere to the guidelines as it relates to discipline and academics.
And we're looking at the data, we had about, we had a forty percent decrease in data. Granted, I don't have third, fourth, and fifth in my building, so of course I would have a decrease. But we're able to have developmentally appropriate practices for our little ones as far as discipline is concerned.
And then you said discipline data, I was going to talk about that. You said decreasing data, I want to make sure they understand it was a decrease in the discipline.
Discipline data, yes, discipline data. No, not academic data. Not at all. Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Okay, the other component of it is being able, again, to offer hands-on experience to our students that are child-friendly and appropriate at PB Young Elementary School. The focus is not always on our third, fourth, and fifth graders. So I am able to give to my students activities and material that's child-friendly and developmentally appropriate. So for the student impact, yes, it is working, and that's from the qualitative point of view. We're going to get to some quantitative data. Teacher impact?
The teacher impact, we both have agreed that it has been very positive for our teachers in that they're able to have focused planning, especially at Tidewater Park in that we've departmentalized. So we have one set of teachers who teach math, science, and social studies. And then we have another set who teach the reading and writing. So when they're planning, they don't have to spend seven to ten hours on a Sunday trying to teach all five to seven, or however many subject areas we have. They have that focus, that time where they can focus on just those areas. So they're able to plan more hands-on centers and workstations and things of that nature, which are in line with the Montessori-like type school that we're trying to embrace here at Tidewater Park and PB Young. So the teachers really appreciate the, having the opportunity to work as a group on just reading. It makes them become an expert in the area that they really enjoy teaching thus far. Also, they're able to provide age-appropriate and developmentally appropriate interventions easily. It's just a, when, when we've had the opportunity to defy these two, these two, the upper, I mean, the upper elementary as well as the lower, the primary children, it's just given the school the ability to be able to focus on that particular age group. And so you don't feel as though you're neglecting the other. You're, you're, you're right if you're focusing on third grade today and fourth grade and fifth grade, and you're not neglecting our primary-age students. Because as we all know, early learning is definitely important. But when you're able to just focus on teaching, the teaching, reading to third graders versus the teaching of reading to primary-age students, it definitely has had a positive impact upon our children and our teachers.
And so this is, the next slide is our data. For kindergarten, we use PALS data, and that's given to every school in the state of Virginia. So we had eighty-five percent that are in tier-one. Now again, this is kindergarten PALS data. So the kindergarten PALS data looks at readiness, reading readiness. So we're looking at things like, can they write their name? Do they recognize letters, the letters in the alphabet? And this is also, keep in mind, this is September data. So we'll give another mid-year in January, and we'll have new data in January, and then we'll have our end-of-the-year data. But coming in, we had eighty-five percent tier-one, fifteen percent tier-two. For grade one, we use DRA data. Forty-one percent tier-one, fifteen, tier-two, fifty-six percent tier-three. And this again is DRA, and this is November DRA. And for a second grade, forty-eight percent, seven, and forty-five percent. And I thought about your question to popular halls concerning the difference in the kindergarten and first and second grade reading data. And just to agree with what, yes, Ms. Duke Washington said. I would agree that, one, the level, the level of rigor increases as they get older and, two, expectations. And so that's our goal, is to ensure that all of our students are reading on grade level. So we've placed a lot of our resources in our kindergarten and first grade so that we will not have second graders coming into second grade at a first-grade reading level. A lot of our training has gone to kindergarten and first grade because our second graders, they've, our second-grade teachers, they've always received training with the third grade, the fourth grade, and the fifth grade. So now we're getting our teachers ready in K and one so that we will not have this issue of having second graders who are not reading on grade level. So when they go to Dr. Phillips in third grade, they're spot-on, third grade. They're reading at a third-grade level and ready for third grade.
Just the benefit of a concentrated approach is, is what we're reaping now that we have transformed our schools. Being able to concentrate on third grade and not feel, as I said earlier, that you're neglecting the others in fourth and fifth, and then the reading strategies differ. So that we're teaching the, the later reading strategies, whereas at PB Young, they're teaching the early reading strategies. With the exception of a few students at Tidewater Park who are, who have come to us on the primary and kindergarten and, you know, pre-primar reading level. With the exception of a group of those, the others are being able to be taught comprehension and, and the different later reading strategies. So that's, hence why we see the data, are you done? I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
No, you're fine.
Okay. The district CFA reading data for Tidewater Park administered in November is our next slide. Do I need it? Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, actually, the next slide is the CFA data for PB Young for math.
PB Young, okay.
Now, Mr. Jordan, you ask us, asked if you go into SchoolNet, would you see this data? Now, the data for PB Young CFA, you will not, because we don't have district-wide CFAs. We create our own CFAs for first, second, and first and second, kindergarten first and second. So these are school-based CFAs.
But for Tidewater Park, you would see in SchoolNet?
So the data that you see here, you will see in SchoolNet. These are district CFAs.
And so as you can see, the DFA, I mean, the CFA for reading for Tidewater Park at third grade, we have some concerns, and we'll talk about how we're addressing them later. But at this point, we have sixteen percent of our students who are at sixty percent or better, and then thirty-four percent who are, you know, very close. And then fifty percent who are in the red, those children who are being double-dipped and sometimes triple-dipped when they stay back for the extended-day program at third, fourth, and fifth grade. You can see there, I won't read all of the numbers to you there, but you can see, we have work to do. Did you talk about your math? Okay. Mine must be out. And this is my math. The same is, the math is a little bit better, but it's still not where we would like it to be. But we continue our efforts. I've asked the teachers to stay the course because we know that eventually it will, you know, you'll see the red decrease.
Okay, so our safety nets. We have a four-week cycle. So we assess, we intervene, and then we reassess. And so in reading, our students, as you heard earlier, are tiered. They're tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three. And each of the classes is, one, the students are serviced by their classroom teacher during a scheduled remediation time. Then also, we have our interventionists, our teacher specialists, and our retired teacher. And they receive double and triple doses based on which tier they're in. Tier-two, a double, tier-three, a triple. Our special ed students always receive a triple dose. What we do during their reading time, during their reading block, instead of sending them to a workstation, What we do during their reading time, during their reading block, instead of sending them to a workstation, if I'm a reading specialist and Sharon is a tier-two student, she will come to me as a literacy workstation and work with me to receive remediation. So, they're not missing instruction. Okay? Then, we also have at our after-school program. And for PB Young, all of our second graders are required to participate in the after-school program. So, we were able to kind of leverage our funds so that we can have every second grader in our after-school program. We also have an enrichment program so that the kids are exposed to other things. And lastly, we have benefited from a grant where we have our Life Enrichment Learning Center. They come and they work with our students on iStation. Because what we found, although iStation is a wonderful intervention, our tier-three students, if they're not reading, then it's very difficult to benefit from istation. So, we have one-on-one tutors to sit with our tier-three students to work with them on the istation program.
We too have that same benefit, and the Norfolk Police Department comes in weekly to work with our boys and girls on istation. We have an extended hour, we have one hour extra a day that we provide remedial services to our boys and girls, or intervention-type services to our boys and girls. We operate on the, on small group instruction. We take about fifteen to twenty minutes to give the tier-one instruction, and then everyone is involved in the small group instruction at Tidewater Park.
Before we get to the next steps, which is the next slide, I would like to add another benefit that's not actually in the slide. But the ladies, the principals here have joint shared governance meetings as well where our shared governance team, our division team, come to have conversations about the academic data. We progress monitor what's going on in the schools each month. We share best practices, and that's been a great benefit as well. We were, we did not know it would work the way it has, but being able to have both leadership teams in the same room at the same time has been a benefit that I think is going to really ensure that we're, ensure that the transfer, a true transformation takes place. Because although we have separate schools there, indeed, sister schools are able to take, again, strategies. We are able to see, that was a data point there for third grade that you may, that we see a gap in the learning. But I feel like through the work we're doing, we'll be able to decrease that gap through the work that Dr. White and Dr. Phillips that they're doing. And so, being able to have real conversations about that data each month, and so, Dr. Phillips can anticipate who those students are as we begin to transition them moving into the next grade level. So, that's been a really good benefit, I'll have to say, from the division level and the school level.
Okay, and our next steps. Focus professional development. We're currently working with TTAC in the area of reading. So, we are looking at early literacy training for our teachers. Again, to piggyback on what the other two schools said, our teachers are tiered. I have eleven new teachers. And so, my new teachers are tiered so that we're able to give them focused staff development that they need. However, the forty-five minutes is not enough, so we have a reading boot camp. We have TTAC working with us on what true assessment means. We're also working with the Norfolk Public Schools Reading Specialist, and she's looking at how to combine reading and writing. So, she's working with my teachers. So, reading is our focus at PB Young Elementary School, and Sharon and I also share staff development for her third-grade teachers because third graders are also learning to read. So, we share staff development. We're looking at a staff development on January thirtieth for Montessori, thanks to Dr. Savigny. Other next steps?
We will just continue, as I said earlier, to stay the course. We, the practices that we have implemented are research-based and proven, and we've seen them work. It's just going to take us some time. And so, I feel very confident that continuing to teach close reading during reading time and reading comprehension and the implementation of small group instruction in reading and math will have a positive impact upon our boys and girls. I've seen it done.
Yes.
Thank you all very much for, again, a very informative and well-put-together presentation. Any questions for them? Dr. Gabriel and then Reverend Haywood.
I have two questions. First question regarding the second-grade after-school program. How was that received by parents?
It was well-received. It was well-received. It gave the parents an opportunity, I guess, to have another break. And also, because they know that their kids are getting structured academic programs. So, it was very well-received. It has not been an issue. Transportation is provided. My community, they walk to school. Tidewater Park, they're bussed in, and transportation is provided, so it's well-received. Also, we feed all of our kids breakfast, lunch, and dinner. So, they just stay back, they have their dinner, and then they go home. So, it was well-received.
Do you think that, we've been talking about extended learning time? And are you using your safety net money in order to provide the instructional extra-hour time for the students after school?
Our safety net money is being used for retired teachers. I have three retired teachers in my building, and they're also working with tier-two and three students. So, my money is used for retired teachers. I'm using the money that I receive from the state for SOE remediation for my after-school program.
Your after-school program, okay.
Same applies at Tidewater.
Same with you all, okay. Your data for the kindergarten, it showed almost eighty-five percent of the students were excelling for their, or I guess, passing PALS. Do you think that PALS is an accurate way to assess our kindergarten students?
Well, what it shows is that eighty-five percent of my students came ready to learn with the skills needed from home in order to learn and grow. Therefore, to answer your question, I wouldn't use PALS to determine whether or not a child is going to pass the SOE. However, I do think there are good uses for PALS. PALS is a diagnostic assessment, so it helps us to understand what we need to do to further help our students. You're going to see some decrease in the mid-year only because the initial PALS for kindergarten is only addressing readiness skills. So, it is very low-level. But they should grow each month. And so, as they grow, then the test grows. So, again, yes, I think it's, I think we should be using PALS. Can we use PALS to say they're going to pass the SOE? Absolutely not.
Right, yeah.
But it is a good diagnostic assessment.
And would you say that your pre-K students that you have, if you were to back your data up, would you say eighty-five percent of them, if you were to give them their PALS assessment, would be scoring the same in kindergarten?
I can tell you from experience, the reason why we have eighty-five percent is because of our pre-K program. If it were not for our pre-K program, it would be completely opposite. That's why it's so high, because of the readiness, the readiness of skills that they receive in our pre-K program.
Okay, thank you.
Reverend Haywood?
Yes, I wanted to, I'm glad to hear that the officers from Norfolk Police Department come and volunteer. Share a little bit more about that with us.
Very similar to what Dr. White said. First of all, we were fortunate enough to receive a new computer lab from the Rotary Club along with the Life Enrichment Center, I think, B of UFC as well. And so, one of the ways in which we utilize that computer lab is that they come in weekly, pull their student, and they go through the iStation program that she referenced earlier. And it is to another way of teaching the child to read.
How many officers actually volunteer?
Oh, gosh, we have at least twenty, twenty-five Norfolk Police Departments. Police officers in our building weekly.
That's excellent.
It may even be more, to be quite honest with you, but I know at least twenty.
It's about twenty, twenty, twenty-five.
So, I commend those officers.
I do too. Very grateful.
And I think it's very helpful to the community and the city that that type of partnership happened.
That commitment, yeah.
I just wanted to say, you know, I was looking at the reading data for PB Young, and also, yeah, for PB Young in particular. And I can see, moving from first grade to second grade, that not only are the scores going up, but in comparison to some of the other schools, the scores are fairly high. So, you're doing something right there, you know? You're doing something good there. And so, just wanted to tell you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, so, item 2.02, teaching and learning. If everybody's good with it, please, I would, I would ask, since we've had the information, if there are particular items or points of interest that the board has or particular questions related to what we have, and perhaps Dr. Bailey would center in on those items.
We have a change of presentation.
Is that right?
Yes, we have an updated one that you just got.
Okay. Yes, everyone has the updated presentation. And Dr. Bailey is prepared to provide the salient points of this. Dr. King.
Is that a leading statement there, Dr. Houston?
I'm sorry.
Is that a leading statement?
Well, I think they spoke of literal and inferred earlier. But please, if there's some information that we really need to center in on, unless we happen to.
And thank you, Dr. Houston and Dr. King. At this time, I'll defer to Ms. Campson, who will kind of give us just an overview of progress monitoring. And that will probably cover our presentation for tonight.
Good afternoon, everyone, once again. Progress, we were asked, the school board asked to have some more information about progress monitoring. And so, we're going to give you kind of a brief overview. And really, what we're looking to do is answer the logical questions that most people would have is, you know, what is it? What is progress monitoring? You know, what does it look like in our schools? Why do we need it? You know, what's the whole point of what progress monitoring is? And basically, when we're in schools, we set targets for our children. It could be a daily target. You know, they learn how, they learned who was president of the United States. It could be a more long target. They learn how to do, divide a two-digit number into a four-digit number with a remainder. Or it could be our big target. They learn what they need to know in fourth grade, all the fourth-grade state standards in social studies to pass an SOE test. So, they're the targets we set. And what progress monitoring does for us is it acts as checkpoints along the way toward our students reaching a target. And they can be informal or formal. But basically, it's an assessment that we give to in some way gather data about our students and where they are along the way to the target that we've set for them. And once we collect that data, and hold it there for me, hold it there for me. And once we collect that data, then we use that data. So, here, as you see, so if we start with the state curriculum, the standards of learning, our teachers then use that state curriculum to plan our lessons, do our instructional planning tightly aligned to the curriculum, and then they deliver those lessons they plan. And so, what we do is, they give those lessons, is we provide progress monitoring along the way to see, did we successfully teach the children what we were supposed to teach them based on the state standards? And then, we take that student assessment data, and we make data-driven instructional decisions about our programs, are our instructional program effective? Is the teacher's delivery of the lesson effective? What did the students learn? What do they still need to learn? What type of interventions? And you've heard about a lot of good interventions that were done by the schools who presented earlier. And those, all those decisions on what they're doing are based on the progress monitoring assessments. So, I think we skipped, oh, we took out that, sorry. There it is. Thank you. All right, so how does it fit into Norfolk Public School's cycle for results? Because as we know, all of our instructional programs in Norfolk Public School are based on the cycle for results. That's what we do, that's implemented in our schools. That's what guides everything we do. So, if we're doing progress monitoring, does it fit in our cycle for results? Absolutely. It fits right at, we'll go to the next one. All right, here we go. It's step three, notice step three, which has to do with, we provided instruction. So, we're going to assess our students to see at step three where they are on their way to the target. And some of our students will be right where they need to be, right where we want them to be at that point in time. They are proficient. Some of our students will be close to proficiency, some of our kids will be well away from it. And so, based on that progress monitoring checkpoint, we'll take that data, we'll analyze it, and we'll make decisions about what we can do to improve our instruction, to make adjustments to the program that we have going, and what we're going to do to support our children using our safety nets and other funding that's made available. And that happens, and that'll be in step four, we're doing our analyzing, and in step five, we are delivering our safety nets. And so, back to step six, here we're back to progress monitoring again. Did it work? What we planned, based on the first progress monitoring at step three, our analysis of that information, and then the interventions that we provided, did they work? We're going to do a second check. And then, we just continue doing that. And that's basically the way progress monitoring works. So, it's step by step. We'll go into the next slide. Okay, so, this is how, this is how it goes in our schools now. I would like to say that we are in the process of tightening the progress monitoring in the academic affairs department. And so, this is where we're headed, fully implemented in some schools, some schools moving there. Because our schools are like our children, they're at different levels, as we know. So, at the very basic level, very informally, teachers do progress monitoring every day. They teach a lesson, they check for understanding. They ask, they have exit tickets, they ask the children to do something, they ask questions to check for understanding. Then, the grade levels get together, the teachers then create grade-level assessments every week so they can check, another little quick checkpoint. Did we master, did our children get what we taught them that week? Or do we need to make adjustments and circle back and do some more instruction week two? At the school level, we're providing monthly CFAs, and those are the common formative assessments that you're all familiar with. Every child's taking the same assessment. Then, the district provides benchmarks, and you've seen a lot of our benchmark data already. And then, of course, all that leads us to the target. So, that's kind of how the process works. And so, what we'll do is, we'll show an example, and I think Karen's got an example here for you.
Certainly, you have seen the situation last month. And so, and I think that you understand what we are presenting here. Certainly, looking at proficient, needs improvement, and did, does not meet the benchmark. So, we did that for elementary, middle, and high school. And so, as we move forward through this presentation briefly, these are additional sources that we have to support progress monitoring in our schools. Certainly, most important are the, sorry, trying to get it to go. Janelle, can you help me out? Thank you. Common formative assessments, as Ms. Campson mentioned, classroom, grade level, school, and district. And then, on to our next slide. We have School Net, Star Reading, iStation, Synergy, certainly for student information system in our special ed, G3000, Read 180, math as well, iAccess. And certainly, I'm sorry, we had our diagnostic reading assessments. So, in conclusion. Ms. Campson?
So, what we'd hope to share quickly, because we were trying to really stay on those timelines, was just an overview of what it was and how it's used. As I said, we are in the process of moving completely to all those steps from classroom all the way down through the district that you saw. You've seen a lot of that data in the past. A lot of our schools are fully into the school level. I think you already, you saw that with the schools that presented, they're doing those. We are working in our department to get more consistency with the school-level piece. The district, of course, is consistent already. But we're looking at bringing more consistency into that so that you'll be able to kind of look from school to school and know that you're looking at the data that's from the same data point so that it's not like, well, this school made this assessment, and this school made this one, and this school made that one. Instead, we'll have a better idea of if I wanted to look at one school to another school to another school, that I know that it's all the same and that we have a lot of rigor in the assessments that are being created, which, you know, it's not so easy to make assessments and make sure that they're at the rigorous level that the state is looking at. And so, that's because in other words, and they don't help us be as predictive as we would like unless they are as rigorous as the state. And so, that's the big focus that academic affairs is now moving toward, is making sure we have more consistency with the... is making sure we have more consistency with the, um, the school level ones that we're giving monthly.
Okay. Thank you. Questions or comments?
Yes, Reverend Haywood.
So, I have a basic question about how you use this data. So we can see the difference in terms of schools, and we can see these different benchmarks. Do you have, um, do you actually present why there is a, for instance, in one school, in reading, you see significant movement and not at the other? So, I mean, in other words, we see the data, and we know that we need to work on that, but are those reasons brought forth in your, in your?
And that's why I, uh, the administration has been looking toward coming up with something that's more consistent. It, you know, if teacher in, in room nine makes her own test, and teacher in room eight makes their own test, then we can't, how can you be sure? That's why you make things a commentative, a common formative assessment. So within a school, that's why in grade four, they use a common formative assessment that the school's making to make sure that all the students in fourth grade are being tested the same. So now what we're looking at is doing that across the district, so that all the fourth graders in the district are being, are being tested the same. So that we can look from school to school and better define where to put our resources, because we're sending our specialists and our, and our content coordinators out, where, where are they most needed? Because it isn't who gets equal amount of time, it's who needs the time the most, and exactly where do they need the help the most. And so, uh, we really want to be sure that we're pinpointing with a laser-like focus the support that we're giving our schools. And so we want to be sure that we know exactly who needs it the most.
And I also, Reverend Haywood, I would like to add that, um, our curriculum and instruction department does look at the data, and they also look at it by school and by SOL objective. And they do look at, um, the outliers, as well as the information in between. And by, um, their visits out to the schools, they do, they are familiar with personnel. And so they're able to determine, um, based on classroom observations, additional support that might be needed. And in conversation with school personnel, they're able to work that out. Certainly, we would like to have more people to go everywhere and be there whenever needed, but, um, they create schedules so that they are able to then provide that type of support.
Right, and that's a good point, because certainly, a single assessment doesn't give us all the information we need. Thank you for adding that.
Mr. Jordan?
So, Ms. Campson, when will there be school level consistency and classroom-to-classroom consistency? What's the goal, system-wise?
Uh, we're actually moving toward it, you'll start seeing it going into effect some within the, in the spring, to get it, just to make sure that we have the place. I actually met with, um, senior coordinators this morning, and I met with the, um, elementary principals all, uh, yesterday, uh, the week's been going kind of fast here, uh, yesterday, because this is something that they're very anxious to get going. And, uh, and it was, uh, I know, set for this, for the academic, uh, teaching and learning for this year, as a goal for the year. And of course, nothing happens overnight, because we have to be careful with what we're doing, and making sure that we're giving a, getting a quality item, uh, a, a quality assessment, because it doesn't help to give all these assessments if, if they're not of good quality and sufficient rigor. So we're moving toward that. You'll certainly see some of it done in the next few months, uh, as a beginning, so that next year will be in place for immediately day one, all the way for the year.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Just a quick comment. Um, when I first joined the board, I made a point to make it, and visit as many schools as possible. And you could tell the schools that were, that were data-driven, and the principals were the, the educational leaders, and they were, they were using that data to drill down to the, the classroom, and the students that needed additional support. And that's, I s, I s, I'm encouraged that those bright spots are going to be, um, the broad stroke of the entire school division. That's going to help us grow.
And, 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 and in fact, Mr. Robinson, it is widespread already, I think more than maybe when you first visited, because our, our principals have really been working toward this. And, and this is just some additional support. All the principals could do it eventually, but if we can help them out, that takes one load off of them, because they have a lot of challenges, as we know, and they're working very hard. And so this is, you know, central office, the, our administration want to do what we can do to support our principals and take a little bit of the burden away from them also.
I'm going to predict something. It's next fall, and you're seeing where the in-process judgments that you've made has resulted in, after three years of this experience, uh, making course corrections that pan out. And I'm going to predict that next fall, when you get the final results of, of this year's testing, that all the work that you've done for in-process judgments, and it's depicted here, uh, is going to pan out, and that you're going to have significantly improvement based on the in-process judgments that you're analyzing.
Thank you.
That's a prediction, and I believe it.
Yes, and we are working towards that.
I know you're.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, you said a lot of things that sparked a lot of thoughts and questions in my head, but what's, what's the real two takeaways as the board member you want me to have in this presentation? Can you just give me a couple of things you really want me to know, hone in on, basically on what you just described?
That we are very anxious to, um, know exactly where our kids are regularly and frequently along the way toward our target of, really, our big target right now is to get our schools accredited. And, and we can't get our schools accredited unless we make sure we improve our, our teaching, and we teach children, I mean, the test is the test, but that's not the reason we're doing all this. We want our children to be able to read and compute on grade level, we want them to know about the world through science, science and social studies. The, the yardstick that we're given to measure whether we did a good job with that is the state SOL test. That's the yardstick. We don't choose that yardstick, but that's the one we have, and that's the one everyone looks at. So that's our target, but, but we have to focus first on making sure our children learn, and so these are the ways we're following along the way. If they're reading on grade level, they're going to do pretty, pretty good on that reading test. And so we're checking along the way, so if they're not headed toward that target at the pace that we need them to be, then we need to go in and do something different or give some additional support. And that's what progress monitoring is all about. It's our checkpoints. Where are we?
If I could ask one follow-up question?
Absolutely.
Because I, it was really bugging me with, with the other presentations, so maybe I'll just ask it now. So, in light of what you said earlier about different schools being at different levels. So when we get presentations and we see something that shows, I don't know, uh, third grade reading, and it has the green, yellow, and red, um, as we look at it, if, as we look at different school data, if I understand correctly, it's possible that the CFA tests at Todd Water, uh, I guess they have the oldest at third grade, could be different from a CFA test at Ginn.
Yes.
And then when we look at how they are performing, we're looking at it, how they're performing against that particular CFA at that school, but it's not necessarily the case that you can compare one school to a.
Absolutely. And that's why we're moving in this direction, is the benchmarks now, that we've been doing for quite a while in our district, are already given to everyone, and they're already the same. That's a quarter out. So what we would like to do is look at it a little bit sooner, you know, more frequently, so that we have a faster checkpoint. And that's what that's all about. And that isn't saying that the test that they're giving here is not fabulous. All these tests could be great, but we'd like to make sure that it's consistent even more frequently than we were doing with our benchmarks. And our benchmarks were already doing this, because they're all common to the whole, whole district.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Campson, would you say that the schools, um, I guess particularly on the elementary level, are all being paced at about the same rate?
Absolutely. They are, and the senior coordinators provide that pacing for the schools. So pretty much the schools that are making their own, and I know I was making my own monthlies, um, we look at the district pacing for the quarter, and then we just divide it down so that we try and stay, because our schools are all Norfolk Public Schools, we don't get to make up our own pacing. So we try to stay within the quarter. What this will do is try and keep them within a certain mark. It'll just, it'll just tighten it up a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you. Let me commend you all for, uh, the utilization of the progress monitoring integrated with the cycle of results, because, because I think it gives us kind of, um, an added mechanism, so to speak, or really tracking accurately where the students are, which, uh, is a starting point to making sure that both the teachers and students get the support that they need to be successful. So I, I commend you all on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, thank you. Um, so, absolutely. So, so let me just kind of, uh, take the pulse of, of, of the group here. I kind of wanted to push through, uh, two point oh three and oh four before we break, but if, uh, uh, as we look at what's coming up next, if you feel the need to go ahead and take the break, now we'll do so. Uh, if not, we'll, we'll push forward with. Everybody good? Yes? Okay. Two point oh three, uh, school leadership development, and, uh, just remind us that we are a bit behind schedule in terms of, uh, the agenda, so, uh, in terms of our questions and comments, let's, you know, just be mindful of that, please.
Okay. Chairman, here's the members of the board, school leadership development, two point oh three. First item will consist of essential action updates, and, um, we're going to, um, ask to hit the, uh, major points to keep the board informed of items of interest. And if there are some other items that are not touched, then of course, we'll be glad to provide those. But, uh, first item will consist of essential actions update. Dr. Wilber?
Okay. Dr. Houston, members of the board, Dr. King, uh, what I would like to ask is that you accept the, uh, report that you received on the development of the corrective action plans and the conditional accreditation agreement for our denied and conditionally accredited schools. I ask that, uh, you be reminded that the conditional accreditation agreement for Todd Water Park and PB Young Elementary Schools is just that, it is an agreement between us and the Superintendent of Public Instruction, uh, that details, uh, the essential actions that must occur at those schools. Schools that are denied accreditation will develop corrective action plans, uh, per the memorandum of understanding with the Virginia Board of Education. We have developed draft corrective action plans, uh, for our schools that were denied accreditation, you've received those. The corrective action plans were developed to specifically link the essential actions from the academic review to the requirements detailed in the MOU. So we will send our school improvement efforts around the work, uh, to accelerate our school improvement journey to full accreditation. Per the memorandum of understanding, we've also held community meetings to gain community input on these plans. We, uh, posted the plans on the school's websites, and used Survey Monkey, uh, to gain additional community input. From these efforts, a common theme emerged in regards to parent and community input. Uh, the theme has been developed into an essential action for all five schools, and we've talked about that essential action, uh, to engage parents and the community into the school improvement process by providing quarterly updates regarding the school's academic status, progress, and other concerns related to the school's transformation. Uh, to support this essential action, each school will be required to establish parent, community advisory councils. And so at this time, I would like to just open the floor up for questions regarding the essential actions, uh, that you receive.
I don't know if it's a question, but just a, uh, a struggle. So, you know, did, I was able to attend a few meetings, I think, two or three meetings. Didn't see a lot of parent participation there. Uh, is there anything that you've done beyond those meetings to, uh, try to, I know you mentioned the Survey Monkey, but beyond that, uh, to try to get more parental feedback into these plans? And then you mentioned that you did receive some feedback, uh, but I couldn't really see how it was reflected in the plan itself. So can you just kind of talk about both of those for me?
Yes, I, I think we have to keep in mind that, um, first of all, the corrective action plan is a fluid document. And so the essential action that has emerged, the one that I spoke of, uh, creating the parent advisory councils, uh, came straight from a discussion, not at one, but, uh, a couple of schools, in terms of parents wanting more communication. Communication about those essential actions that are in the corrective action plans, which are definitely academically focused. And so parents, uh, the parents who attended, uh, community members that attended, uh, voiced that, uh, in the, in the various community meetings. And again, that, when you pull out the different discussions, the conversations, uh, that was the thing that emerged. From establishing those parent advisory councils, each school will, again, be able to, uh, to discuss their school improvement plan regularly with parents. That becomes a mechanism for us to bring more parents in, in itself. So, uh, whereas I, I was there facilitating those meetings, and I would agree, uh, parent engagement is, is, we, we want more of it. And so we feel like establishing those parent advisory councils is going to give us more contact to, uh, leaders, uh, in the, in the community, that, and bring more parents in. Uh, we should also be able to use our parent liaisons as well to help, uh, to help bring more parents into the, I feel like, I would call it, the academic conversation.
And if I may, Mr. Jordan, um, our Department of Communications has, um, helped with this effort, so I'm asking Elizabeth Mather, just to give you some specific strategies that were used. Elizabeth?
Yes. Um, so regarding, um, the turnout issue for particular meetings, and your request about what we did additional to that, um, we did provide the.
Reverend, I just want to, a camera statement, you stepped forward, just to know that, thank you, Cameron.
Thank you. Um, we did provide the, it was a very short survey, just a two-question survey, asking parents to take a look at the, the corrective action plan, the draft corrective action plan, and just give basically two pieces of feedback, what's strong about the plan, and what would you suggest improving. And, um, we also printed the survey and sent it home with the most recent community meeting where we noticed that there wasn't as much participation as we would have liked. Did that assist?
Yeah, I guess I would just say, in terms of, if I understand what you're asking, as far as board acceptance of the plan, uh, in all of the plans, I would like to see more, depth or focus around, uh, specific strategies to, uh, increase, uh, parenting, family engagement and participation. I don't know, I mean, you all determine whatever the appropriate levels are, but, um, just in the plan itself, I know we have the advisory council as a goal, I guess I'm looking for something that's more deliberate, something that's more concrete, that really, uh, kind of lays out what a particular strategy would be, uh, at a particular school, for that particular community, to ensure that we're seeing the, the growth in that, in that engagement and, and involvement. We have PTAs, we're talking about, uh, parent advisory councils, uh, SMTs, advisory committees to help with their school plans, there's a lot of different things, but, uh, I'm not sure how to put it into words, but I'd just like to really see it scream out to me that from our perspective, that there's a real concrete strategy, school by school, to reach out to parents, and not just parents, inviting parents to the building, but there's some strategy for us to get into the home and get into the community, to make sure that we're seeing the, the type of engagement involvement that, that I think we said we want to see, that makes, that makes sense.
I noticed that in the Lake Taylor Middle and the Booker T, there are goals explicitly laid out in terms of targets for achievement. Is there a reason why targets for achievement were laid out in the other plans as well?
Are you speaking of in the, um, presentations? The PowerPoints?
Yeah, it's, well, it's in the PowerPoint. But I assume you're going to include the PowerPoint along with your plan. So I noticed that, for instance, in Booker T, it has, you know, where she wants to be year to year to year to year.
The PowerPoint was included, just so you have some documentation for those who weren't able to, to, to make the meetings, you'd have some documentation of what was discussed at the meeting, or what was presented. And so the principals had, uh, some flexibility in development of, uh, parts of the presentation. Uh, each, each. in development of, uh, parts of the presentation. Uh, each, each community meeting started off with the, uh, principal presenting-
Right.
-their, their vision and mission, and then we segwayed into the, uh, MOU, uh, discussion. And so, again, they had some, some, uh, flexibility in terms of, of what you're seeing. So, that, that's just, uh, to show, uh, differentiated approaches to what was discussed at the meeting.
Okay. So, what you're asking tonight is board approval of the formal essential action plans that are submitted, or corrective action plans that are submitted back?
No, from, from my understanding, we don't necessarily need board approval for it.
Right. No, I understand that, but your, your language initially, when you spoke this evening, this afternoon, was, you're recommending blah, blah, blah. Right?
Yes. At this point, uh, we will have to share the corrective action plans with the Virginia Department of Education's Office of School Improvement. There would be additional essential actions that would come from, uh, quarterly discussions that, uh, Dr. King and Dr. Burge, um, Camps and myself will have with the, uh, Office of School Improvement. So, we can, that's why I said this is a fluid document. Uh, it will, there will be additional, uh, essential actions, uh, specifically, uh, as it relates to the memorandum of understanding. Uh, for example, we had, uh, we had technical, we've had technical assistance sessions this week, uh, and last week at Lake Taylor Middle and Booker T, Washington. And so, from those, uh, technical assistance sessions, that's, um, that was a, a, a task or requirement from the MOU. And from the discussion that we have, or from those technical assistance sessions, we predict that, uh, or we, we know that additional actions will come to support the, the corrective action plans. And so, as you look at those essential actions as they are now, uh, we look to continue to build those as well as the documentation to show that we are moving forward, uh, in, in meeting, uh, the, 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 the essence of the essential actions. Uh, with the idea, if going back to the MOU, that we will have to present a, um, annual update to show progress. So, the corrective action plans are set where we can, uh, monitor our progress on completing those essential actions, and then, as we complete them, we'll write additional essential actions until we are able to get fully accredited in those schools.
Dr. Robinson?
First of all, I wanna congratulate, uh, Mr. Jordan on, on leading that wonderful PTA, uh, program the other night on, on how to increase parental, uh, engagement. I thought it was a fantastic program and was well-attended. Uh, we talk about shared responsibility time and time again, and parental engagement can look in different, different ways and different things. And they can be on parental advisory committees, they could be in the PTA, they could be with, the bottom line, the, 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 the foundation and the basis is, is that a parent is involved in their student's education, making sure their child gets enough rest at night, make sure they're up in the morning, make sure they're, they're, uh, prepared to be on time in school. Those are the, those are the ideas of shared responsibility in my mind is, is the critical foundation for parental engagement. The essential actions are basically the things that we agreed with the, uh, our, our state, uh, turnaround partners that, uh, we're, we're going to do to, uh, move the schools forward. But again, it, it, we learned a long ti, uh, from Dr. Constantino, uh, in his talk about how parents are the first and most influential, uh, teachers in a child's life. We need to, we need to make sure that we continue to fi, um, find ways to increase their, the parental, uh, responsibility and the parental shared, shared responsibility in this process.
Thank you.
If I may, and that's kind of what I was trying to get to, that, that somehow that strategy, that approach is clear to us. I mean, I recognize, uh, you know, definitely what you're saying, but since we have the essential action and we have some responsibility for it, how to, um, uh, show just that, you know, so not, not just, we will create a parent advisory council and give quarterly updates, but they were gonna try to deploy some of the things that Dr. Robinson just said and, and be able to, you know, monitor, measure, encourage, that, that's, that's what I'm trying to, that's what I would like to see in, you know, kinda articulated in the, in the plan.
Thank you. All right. Couple of other presentations under, uh, school leadership.
Next item, following, um, essential actions update, it's also related to the MOU, uh, board related, board requirements for board professional development. We talked a little bit about that, um, as we were entering into the process of, of building this, and this relates to, of course, board governance. Um, I provided for you an update, 'cause you know, we started this process a while back in terms of identifying four major goals that, that are really still, uh, utmost importance for us. But it, but what you have will allow us to continue to add goals, modify the goals that we have, and tweak them as necessary. Um, and DOE has already endorsed the fact that the, uh, direction in which this governance team has headed already satisfies that requirement, and we're on the right track with, uh, board governance and that, uh, this type of approach is going to become more widespread across the state as well. But what you have, uh, supporting informa, information, uh, centers on a review of those four goals that we pinpointed for governance leadership team training. It also gives you, uh, a reminder of what those action sta, steps were and the status of those action steps. Uh, many of those, we've already acted upon them, but remember that they are ongoing, and we should, uh, move forward and get better and better as we continue to update the steps we take to meet the measurements. And just as we talk about, um, indicators for progress as it relates to, uh, the strategic plan, et cetera, also the measurements that we outlined can be tweaked and modified and update as we mo, updated as we move forward. With it, you also have, uh, documentation of the examples and samples of agenda items that the board has utilized and developed jointly with, uh, Virginia School Boards Association, along with, uh, NSBA, National School Boards Association, and Q. Uh, first goal that we pinpointed centered on strategic planning and developing that, and the fact that we move forward with that and where we are with the status now, that, uh, measurement-wise, planning implementation should continue through June 2018 and continue to update that, and it continues to be a fluid document. And of course, the board, um, holds the administration and the organization accountable for ensuring that steps that are taken and action plans that are implemented are relevant and pertinent to student achievement. The second goal that was pinpointed there is in reference to governance training, uh, really centers on, uh, the governance leadership team annually reviewing and adopting board and division priorities. You always enter into that process as it relates to the work and where it relates in terms of the strategic plan itself. Goal number three, in reference to, uh, board professional development and governance leadership team activities, states that the governance leadership team will engage in systematic improvement. Of course, that carries a myriad of, uh, a mir, uh, a myriad of, uh, impressions in terms of activities as well, and it speaks to self-assessment, speaks to the training that we will continue to do in, with our collaborative partners, and also the ancillary, uh, training opportunities that, uh, VSBA offers in addition to those that, uh, we do of a customized standpoint. So, uh, at this point, our board governance training is customized based on the needs of this team, this organization, and you all worked collaboratively to build those agenda, the items. The last goal states that the board utilizes an organizational structure that ensures decisions are made based on the best interests of students and that it remains student senate. Uh, action steps are reviewed there as well as measurements and baselines, targets, and absolute target, and absolute targets. What I would suggest to the board, it centers, centers on reviewing this, considering updates, changes to goals, uh, additions to the goals in terms of board professional development that you would like to see, and even modification of some of these goals to, to, uh, better reflect some of the trainings that have occurred. For example, in the last training, the past weekend, that was a, a, a heavy focus on how to use student achievement data, uh, to inform the work of the board as it relates to policy, modification of policy, adoption of policy, et cetera. And so, that can be an example of where either action steps are updated or it becomes a goal. So, this really should be a collaborative working document between the governance leadership team around what board governance and professional development means for us and linked to our MOU. Uh, and this has been, the process that we're utilizing is, is approved as a, as an appropriate process, but we need to continue to customize it in terms of what our needs are. So, uh, for this afternoon's work session, I would, uh, suggest that the board would continue to take a look at it, take a look at the action steps, measurements, et cetera, and the four goals to, uh, later determine as we move forward, how we want to tweak, add to, and, uh, modify. So-
And I would, I would only add, thank you, uh, Dr. King, that we, uh, continue to be familiar with the, uh, Department of Education's expectations of school board as it relates to school improvement, and that we perhaps would also identify, um, additional, uh, reading material, books or what have you, that we might read together as the governance team related to our role in school improvement, just as, um, the, uh, staff, uh, teachers and all, uh, engage in continued professional development for this work. I don't think we can do that too much, uh, as a board, and making sure that we're clear, uh, on our, on the, on the understanding of our role and, uh, as educated and empowered as we can be, uh, relative to speaking. Yes?
Point of order.
Sure.
I would just like to add, I'm looking at the calendar of governance, governance leadership training.
Mm-hmm.
It's a VSBA convention. I was there, so I'd like to have my name directly added to that, and the Task Force on Schools in Challenging Environments. I know Dr. Gabriel was there, so was, I was there also, so I'd just like to make sure that I get credit for that, too.
Uh, Mr. Jordan, can you make sure Dr. Robinson gets that credit? Dr. Robinson?
Yeah, sure. I'll make sure of it. But, uh, Dr. Houston, going back to what you were saying earlier, and Dr. King, I, um, when I was reviewing this for the meeting, I was kinda struggling trying to figure out what we were really trying to do here. So, I know inside of, this is, um, in part our response to the memorandums that we had with, uh, was it Campus Stella and, uh-
Was it Lake Taylor?
Lake Taylor in particular? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, I was going back trying to match the two, and, and I really couldn't follow it in the agreement. There was a section in there where it identified, uh, the board's responsibilities and the items around professional development, and I can't remember the exact sequencing, but it was in one section, and then it tied to, uh, activities like section three. And then when I looked at it, I couldn't quite figure out, 'cause it, to me, it seemed like it was almost redundant that it was in section three that it referenced the professional development, and then it said for us to have professional development for the items in section three. Is that correct? Was, was I reading it correct? Okay.
Yes.
So, then, when I look at, but these goals that we have here, these are the goals that you pulled from our strategic plan, right?
Board of Distinction-
The Board of Distinction.
Governance for us-
Right.
-in training.
Yes. So, kinda piggybacking on what, um, Dr. Houston said earlier, I think these are good on the governance side. Um, like, you did reference in here the data training that we just had at, uh, VSBA, but I would think that, um, maybe if we went back and look at, uh, I guess some of the things we never got to when we had the school improvement training last year, remember we came back early when it, when it snowed? If there's some specific, uh, areas beyond just the, uh, you know, the law conferences and things like that, but if there's some specific areas that you recommend, or maybe the state recommends, or some best practices that we could hone in on that really provides additional support for, uh, the schools that we have in, in turnaround, I think something like that would be, would be helpful.
Yes. To that point, uh, you know, that's why I mentioned that it's important for the board to review these, and I think that a, an additional goal can be added to specifically speak to, uh, the board's role in ensuring, uh, a focus on student achievement as it relates to individual schools, and what those action steps are, and the kind of training that, uh, the board has begun to immerse itself in, as well as what we jointly anticipate doing in that regard. So, I think that, you know, an additional goal that will speak to that, and even tying in, you know, how we wanna measure that, what we wanna accomplish by it, because ultimately, uh, that role for the governance leadership team would center on, um, building the capacity to facilitate that happening via the administration, whether it's by policy, whether it's by, uh, continuing to modify policy that relates to student achievement in a way that it, it builds capacity for the school. But I do think that that would be, I think that that one item is one that can be separated out so that we can pinpoint what the board, this board, in a customized way, is doing from a governance leadership team training effort to focus on that. And for example, you know, we mentioned the, the, uh, data-driven approach, and how the board utilizes that to, uh, pinpoint board priorities as to support. While we speak of the priorities and goal setting here, actually having a separate goal added that centers on, uh, the notion of developing priorities based on what the data really reflects to the board and supporting the administration in that way, I think would be a good example of that, and others. And , uh, and under-measurements, um, infused within this process is also, um, the step that's required for VSBA for a board to be a high-functionable, ex hours of training, all of those things, but it goes beyond that, and it should go beyond that. And so, I, and I know that's ever-changing as well, because I know there's some discussions at that level now about how that training is going to be adjusted. I think we all have to pay attention to that and adjust this and make this professional development piece fluid, just as the other plans are, so.
Thank you. And I think the utilization of these questions that we received as well in that presentation, really, really good, are, are really good for both our discussion and decision, discussions and decision-making as it relates to, uh, special school improvement.
But, but process-wise, you, you want us to review this and then at the, at the next work session or some future date-
Be ready for updates.
Give you some, email you or some comments on what we think we could do to-
Right.
-update this, okay.
Yes. Or any changes, or you may just, you know, it could be that you decide that certain goals that are here now can be replaced by others because of steps that have already been taken.
Is there a date that we need to, uh, have this done?
We've not been provided a date for that, except to be able to show that we are already doing it, and we've done that, and we've submitted that, so we've satisfied that. But I think within our group, we need to begin to think about it time-long.
Okay. We have one more piece, uh, under the school leadership development, the principal leadership training. We have that information in ours.
Right. And I'll, I'll take that. Um, that's principal leadership training update, uh, objectives and benefits. You will recall that, um, near the beginning of the school year during planning time and building readiness for entering into school year fourteen, fifteen, we talked a lot about two major items of, of, of interest, uh, that, uh, were and continue to be of paramount importance. One, teacher effectiveness, and the other, leader effectiveness. And so, um, the division moved forward with the team, uh, working together, cabinet-level team working together to build an RFP, to secure an entity to partner with us to provide, uh, customized leadership training for principals, where, uh, principals will be involved along with central level linked to our needs, involved in building indicators and objectives that are important for us, important for Norfolk. And so, from that RFP, uh, we secured a partnership with AA SA and the Supes Academy to work with us to provide, uh, training sessions. That has moved forward, and Mr. Gary Solomon would have been present, but I think he was held up in- That has moved forward, and Mr. Gary Solomon would have been present, but I think he was held up in, uh, one of the airports attempting to be en route here, I don't know which one, I think, uh, in Charleston, so weather was, was a problem. And inclement weather wouldn't allow him to be here, because he was going to talk and present in terms of where we are now. So I'm gonna, I'm going to give you the, the, the details of it, and I'll ask any of the executive directors or any other, uh, administrative officials to, to fill in. But as far as the, uh, PowerPoint and the agenda, um, what is the significance of AA SA and Supes Academy in our partnership, which is the first slide, which is next? I don't have a remote, so, okay, somebody's going to drive for me. Okay. All right, thank you. And so I mentioned, uh, in terms of the entity that, around which we are partnering, that's AA SA, American Association, American Administration of, American Association of School Administrators, as well as the Supes Academy in partnership with Norfolk Schools to provide customized training for one hundred percent of our principals across schools as needed. We secured that through the RFP process, working collaboratively with our team right here. Uh, and it's the Norfolk League Program. The mission of this was to, um, identify the needs for the organization as it relates to, uh, our principals and the customization that was needed there for the principalship linked to where this division is thus far. And I will move into the next slide, which centers on the, the various, uh, options of academy participants and, uh, pinpoint that, and I will hand it to Dr. Malisi and any other officials to support her to talk about where we are now and what's going to happen. So, we had an opportunity, they, what they provide consists of, uh, work with cabinet, consist of work with, uh, executive partnership for superintendents, sitting principals, assistant principals, emerging leaders. And so, at this point, we've settled on what the initial emphasis was around the sitting principalship. And so, we have begun that process with our first session, and with that, I'll ask Dr. Malisi to talk a little bit about that from there.
Good afternoon, Dr. Houston, school board members. Uh, thank you, Dr. King. Yes, we, we, uh, settled on sitting principals for our main audience of this, uh, Leadership Academy. They have, uh, gone through one complete session, um, and their next session is scheduled a week from tomorrow, the twenty-second of January. The, um, few things that, first of all, um, Gary Solomon sends his deepest regrets. He was on three flights today and in the air, got rerouted to Charleston and, and just couldn't get here. So he went back to Chicago where he started this morning, so, um, and he does want me to call him with any questions you might have right after this presentation. But the, there are some things that we asked the, um, Academy to focus on, and one of those was custom content, as you see in the second bullet, custom content and district collaboration. Um, we collaborated with them to put this together, um, as, as executive directors. And, um, throughout the course of this, the principals will be collaborating with us and them to, um, form it and reformulate it. Um, and if you see down a few bullets, the agility to modify content in real time as conditions change. So, um, this is a very real-time program, um, that meets the needs of the principal, uh, principals as they see their needs to be. Oops. Right now, it consists of two cohorts of principals and two master teachers who come in from, um, the Supes Academy to work with them. Uh, last time, they separated them into elementary principals in one group and secondary principals in another. This will run through October of next year. Um, and the, um, after each, um, session, they do a, um, survey. And the survey this time, uh, received for the first session, and I understand that's very high, got a four-point-six-eight out of five by the program, uh, participants. These are the topics, I'm not going to read them to you, but these are the topics that, uh, will be covered throughout. And again, it's a living, um, institution, so it's going to keep changing as the needs of the principals change. They talk to them one-on-one, there are small rooms for consultation and coaching available to them during those sessions. Uh, so it is very, very, very customized. And to, um, to close, these are some statements that, uh, the principals gave at the end of the first session. They were extremely positive, they're very excited about the next session. They are very thirsty for anything that will, um, increase their leadership capacity. Questions?
Stuart? I think, Dr. King, we've already answered this in a previous question, but I'm very interested in making sure that there perhaps is recertification credit for participants? And if you haven't explored the possibility for, uh, simultaneous college credit towards, uh, coursework, I had experience doing this for Loudoun County, uh, and if you contract with Dean Bray over at Old Dominion, I'm sure that she could assign an adjunct or someone to them, uh, for future courses where you're encouraging excellent teachers, promising, uh, folks. Uh, I just think, uh, simultaneous college credit would be a, a great opportunity. And with all the time that folks put in because of this, it's just fantastic to not only get recertification credit, but get college credit towards, uh, degrees and whatever. And I could almost see a cohort developing, uh, that would be, uh, satellited, and of course, I have a university preference, but I'll choose, uh, Old Dominion, uh, that there could be a cohort within that university, uh, connected to, to this whole thing. This is a great start, uh, and it goes to the question that I look forward to asking, uh, Dr. King in May, do you have the principals for two thousand and fifteen, sixteen? Thanks, exciting.
It is very exciting, and they are doing research and homework and assignments, and so, yeah, it is, it is an actual college course.
With all the time they're putting in, I'd like them to get as much.
So thank you for that, that was an outstanding.
And I'm sure that she will pay attention to your outreach.
Yeah, we're fellow Yankee fans, she, she and I, so we're, we're good. Any more questions?
So, this gentleman that you were speaking of?
Mm-hmm.
And he comes in from Chicago?
He does not, he, um, he, he is headquartered at, at the Supes Academy, and he is the CEO, is that what his title is? Of the Supes Academy?
Yeah.
The master teachers come in to, to do the coursework.
Okay.
Yes.
How many school systems are involved in these types of, is this widespread, is this used wa- throughout the country?
Yes, it, the, he, this entity is involved at various levels. For example, I mentioned executive cabinet.
Right.
Principalship level, so some are at the principalship level. But when the RFP was reviewed, I don't know, uh, Dr. Thornton, you may remember how many systems he's already, they're already involved.
We could get you a list, though.
I was just, I don't need the exact number, I was just wondering, it sounds like it's a great program.
It's all over.
And again, we're train, we train our people the best.
I know. While at the Council of Great City Schools a couple of years ago out in, uh, Indiana, I attended a, a workshop, uh, presented by, um, Charlotte Ecklerberg, uh, District Schools, uh, Simula Academy.
Right.
Uh, their focus was on emerging leaders, those aspiring to be, uh, assistant principals and principals, and it was a pretty, pretty impressive program. I'm not sure if it was, you know, affiliated with the same, you know, company or organization, but, uh, it seemed to be definitely a model program.
One of the things you might know, um, and I guess it's important for you to know, uh, as executive directors, we do not stay for the sessions. So, we would not be able to speak to what is actually going on, except that I get the curriculum before, I have it for this session coming up now. But, um, what the Supes Academy likes to do is create a safe place for principals without their bosses there, so we are not there. Yes, ma'am.
This first cohort that you have, were they volunteering to be in the cohort, or were they specifically?
It's all principals, every principal we have is, is.
Oh, every single principal that we have in the district?
Yes. Even our auxiliary site coordinators.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, so, um, uh, there is a need to change the tape for, uh, the cameras, so we'll, we'll go ahead. Yeah, exactly. We'll go ahead and take our, our break now, and, uh, that's, uh, can we do ten minutes? That'll kind of help us if we, if we can try to be back in ten, okay? All right?